City of Forest Park, City Council Meeting Number 1427. Today is January 16th. We are going to begin by starting us saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one on the agenda is the roll call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Adams.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Yeah.
All right. All council members are present and accounted for. Item number two on the agenda are the minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to be made?
I just had a question, Mr. Mayor. The, in that last meeting that we had, I do believe I had requested something concerning marijuana dispensaries on the work session? Would that have been on this one? I didn't see it.
In the, in the minutes?
Yeah, I didn't see it on here. In the minutes, under the report.
I never heard work session item.
No? Okay.
All right. Well, we can.
Or talking points.
Yeah, we can sort it out.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other changes or adjustments to be made to the minutes? All right. Hearing none. Moving on to item number three, which is presentations, and we have three presentations tonight. The first of which, we have a special guest in the house, a celebrity of sorts. Our very honorable County Commissioner, Ms. Denise Drew House, is gonna grace us with a brief presentation, but I told her she can talk as long as she needs to.
I said I'd take three minutes.
About all the wonderful things, all the opportunities that we have to partner with the county. So, County Commissioner, if you want to take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my delight to be out here in the second largest city in Hamilton County. Out, I know, out in Forest Park, I know. I just saw the mayor at church on Sunday. So, when I told him, "I'm coming out, but I can't remember when," and here I am. So, anyway, just like that. So, I really am delighted to be out here and talk a little bit about the opportunities to partner with the county. A partnership only works when we're both working it, right? That we're doing our part and you're doing your part to apply for some of the opportunities. And so, I'm just here to highlight some of those and give a brief update related to the county. Happy to answer any questions if you have them when I'm finished. And so, I did pass out my menu of opportunity. I don't know how many of you were here back in 2017 when I did this the first time. It's been a while ago, but we have updated that information and it's expanded. You know, I talked at that time about partnership and we have expanded the partnerships through many of the different departments at the county. So, the contact information is on there per department. And on the back, you'll see the contact information for all three county commissioners. We all do this work together, and so you can reach out to us anytime. And I know I speak for all three of us. We welcome your communication to the county. So, just a brief update on what's going on at the county. We did just pass our budget in December. And the good news is, we passed it and it was structurally balanced. The bad news before that was that we had a $40 million gap between what the departments came in and asked for and what we had available by way of resources. And when the sheriff comes in and the coroner comes in, the treasurer comes in, and they all say, "We are trying to do our part to have competitive wages in our departments and to do well by our employees." You want to try to respond to that. And so, we did our best work. We pared back a little bit. We didn't fill all the vacancies that they had filled through their analysis. And so, we ended up with a balanced budget. We are trying to make sure that the county does our job well because it serves your residents. When we do it well, your residents have what they need to thrive in this community. And so, we did do a competitive wage study a couple of years ago. We are in range now in every single department, which I'm very proud of. We offer parental leave at the county. We've got a tuition reimbursement. So, as you can tell, we are trying to not only retain individuals, but also recruit, especially young people and people that look like the county into the organization so that we are better serving the community through our employees. So, I'm really, really proud of the work that we've done. I'm going to talk about partnerships in a minute, but we also are trying to do more work in the sustainability space. We have EV charging stations in our garages. We've just built two garages. I don't know if y'all know this, but we did one next to the FC Cincinnati Stadium. That was our partnership add to what they wanted, right? They built that stadium on their own. Hallelujah! They built that stadium on their own. You know, we own the other two stadiums, rather, you own the other two stadiums because they belong to the taxpayers. But they came to us and said, "Can you help with some infrastructure?" And we said, "Yes." And so, we built a parking garage in the West End near that stadium. But we said, "We owe you a thousand spots, but we're going to put 800 of them near the stadium, but we're gonna do another 200 near Findlay Market because there's such a need for parking in that area for not only the market, but for the development that's going in down there by way of residential and commercial." And so, we actually built 500 spots. I don't know if y'all have been to Findlay lately, but you circle trying to find. I go with my 88-year-old mom, and I can't park that far away with my 88-year-old mom. And sometimes, I'm dropping her, hoping she's still there when I come back, right? After I park my car five blocks away. And so, this garage is really nearby. She and I have parked there. She loves it. That's a bonus. And so, but the idea was to have a community benefit and serve the obligation to FC at the same time. And that's kind of the way the thinking goes at the county where we're trying to solve things for all with the best use of our dollars. So, I think that's a pretty good example of that. I just mentioned the stadiums. So, we will be negotiating the lease with the Bengals. It expires in 2026. We've been circling around that for a while. We're always in conversation with the Bengals because there's always needs at that stadium. And so, we will, though, in earnest this year, start to really buckle under and have these conversations. We have built a team. I am here to tell you, we will do better than we did, they did, a couple of decades ago, that taxpayers didn't do too well under the current lease. I promise to you, all three county commissioners are committed to doing better by the taxpayer. And we have a team of individuals, some of whom have been at that table before, but some of whom are negotiating leases all over the country with sports teams. And so, they know what the current climate is. They know what the financial stacks look like. So, for instance, last time, 20, 20-some years ago, when this lease was negotiated, the county taxpayers were in for about 96% of the build of that stadium. We're not interested in that percentage anymore. That doesn't seem right or fair. And so, in other markets, the teams pay in, the states pay in, the NFL pays in. And so, it is a stack and it is a partnership amongst all to say, "Yes, we want to keep the Bengals here. We want to preserve that county asset, but we're going to do it together." And that's what the market demands. And so, that is the tone of the conversation that's already taking place with the team. I've had some personal conversations with the team and they seem open to, you know, having this conversation. Don't know exactly where we're going to land, but I am optimistic that we'll do better, as I said, for the taxpayers than we did last time. And so, the other thing, I've got, I've got a whole bunch of stuff on here, but let me hone in on partnerships. So, Forest Park has been pretty good, and I don't say this in every community. You know, there are 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County. Some big, some small. You're one of the bigger ones, but you all have done a nice job of partnering with us already in a number of different ways. You take advantage of CDBG, and I hope I'm not telling you anything you don't know, but you are taking advantage of CDBG dollars. Those are the federal dollars that come to us. They have some parameters and restrictions around them, but you all have gotten hundreds of thousands of dollars through that, those projects for home repair, for senior center upgrades, Grandin Road reconstruction project. I mean, there are a number of different projects here. You've also participated in when we had the CARES and the ARPA dollars from the federal government. A lot of those dollars came to Forest Park to bolster some of your businesses and your schools. And you've also taken advantage of a number of solid waste district, their residential recycling incentive grants. You've gotten those for the last three years, I believe. And that's, you know, thousands of dollars as well. I'm here, though, to offer that there are even more opportunities than those that I just listed out. Specifically, I want to remind the council and the mayor that we have revitalization grants. That is a fairly new program. It's, I think this is our third year. These grants are meant to partner with a community that has a project that would revitalize your business district or an area in your jurisdiction where we can partner with you. And you identify it, you know better than any of us do, on, you know, where these projects are. But it can be hundreds of thousands of dollars in partnership from the county. We set aside, I think it was 1.5 million or so in the budget. So, it did survive the budget even though we had to make some cuts here and again. But I would encourage you to apply for those. They open up in March. It's a competitive application, but I don't think Forest Park has received any of those dollars. So, I just want to put that on your radar. The other one is the Small Event Grant. And credit where credits do, this was Commissioner Dumas's idea, to provide these grants to communities that have small events, be it a summer festival or a winter festival. It doesn't matter. It is meant to build community and, again, to augment what you're already doing in your community. These grants are quite a bit smaller, think about 15,000 or so, but they can be really instrumental in bringing in talent or advertising or whatever you want to use them for, for small events. I don't think Forest Park has received those dollars either, but I do want to offer those. They, that application opens up tomorrow. So, it closes on February 16th. So, they're usually about a 30-day window for applications. So, I don't know who writes the grants and who does these partnerships for the City of Forest Park, but I want to congratulate you and thank you for taking advantage of so much that we have to offer in the past because, as I said, you know, we can offer, you know, incentive programs or this, these kind of things all day long, but unless you are partnering with us and applying for these dollars, there's no reason for us to do that. And so, I am grateful for the partnership that you all have shown in the, shown in the past, and I'm hopeful that we will be able to continue that kind of effort here moving forward. So, with that, I don't know if that was three minutes, but it was close. But I'm happy to answer any questions anybody has, and I'm grateful for the opportunity.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. Does any council member have questions for Commissioner Drew House?
I don't know that, but it's just a question. Yeah, it is a question. First off, Commissioner Drew House, thank you so much for being here this evening. We are greatly appreciative of your presence. To be the second largest to Cincinnati and then to have one of the authorities from the highest level of government in Hamilton County to come and let us know that we are equally as important. I thank you for that. So, my question, I guess, and please forgive me, and I'm sure maybe our city manager can probably assist with this, but with the Small Events Grant, is there a particular place on the website that we should go or anything like that? Or should I just have somebody call your office tomorrow and get that information? And we'll work with our city manager to take advantage of that.
Well, my office is here. Here's Chris. So, Chris Harding works as my public affairs person in the office. So, he would be happy to field your questions about that or anything else. It is on the website. Chris, remind me.
Type in Small Events Grant in the search bar. It should be one of the first things to pop up.
Thank you very much.
Hamilton County, Ohio, is where we go. I neglected to mention another partnership opportunity, which is the 513 Relief Bus. Trevina has an awful lot to do with that and he has really made that what it has become, which is a community resource, no matter where it is. The services on that bus are tailored to the community in which that bus sits for that day. And so, Trevina is a rock star. I know you all know that already, but it is a really important partnership that we have with communities. And we are looking to partner if there is an event or any, we're coming out to the Mauritanian community soon to make sure that we address some of the needs there and provide some support. So, if there are any ideas about where that bus maybe could go, and by the way, again, a partnership, we're more than happy to do that. And I do want to say that Chelsea is on the sort of board. So, Forest Park's very well represented at the county level in many different ways.
All right. Well, thank you for that, Commissioner. And actually, I do believe that last year, we were a recipient of the Small Events Grant.
Oh, good.
And we used it for our largest event, Jazz in the Park, so.
Very nice. I'm sorry, I misstated that.
Yeah, no, it was.
Apply again.
We definitely will. It was most definitely appreciated. That was actually our largest turnout ever for the event. It's our largest event, but it was our largest turnout ever last year, so.
I'll be looking forward to that invitation, Mayor.
Yeah, please, please come. And we appreciate the county making that grant available to us. Does anyone else have any other questions for Commissioner Drew House?
Thank you.
Thank you for that, Commissioner. All right. Moving on to our next presentation, it will be from Life Center.
Well, thank you, Mayor and members of council and chief. Assistant chief, so, okay. I was just like, okay. Assistant chief, thank you for inviting me. And it's an honor for me to come after Commissioner Drew House, who we've known in a previous life. So, great to see you again and just wonderful to see how we've talked, you're talking about partnership and the importance of working together. And so, I think that's a great segue. So, I'm Andy Johnson. I'm with Life Center Organ Donor Network. I have worked for Life Center for 18 years. And many of you may or may not know, Life Center is the organization that makes organ transplant happen in this city. And as we talk about organ transplants and we kind of dive a little deeper, let's talk about kidney transplants. There's more than 110,000 people waiting for transplants, heart, liver, lung, kidneys. Almost 90% of that list are people who need kidney transplants. Most of that list is representative of people in the black and brown community. And so, there's a lot of education and outreach that Life Center does, which is what I lead with my department about the importance of knowing your numbers, knowing your family history, talking, you know, if you're suffering from type 2 diabetes, chronic kidney disease, those ailments that will often lead you to being on dialysis and/or needing a kidney transplant, talking about that. So, that's what we do. That's what my department does. As an organization, we have a clinical department that facilitates the actual recovery of organs for transplant. Let's scoot back a little bit. Back in 2020, Jermaine and I and another colleague of mine kind of came together and just started talking about, you know, mess, like message. How do we get this message to resonate in the community about the importance of organ donation, about the importance of registering to be a donor? And we felt like it was really important just to bring, bring this education and outreach into the city of Forest Park, being that it is the second largest city in Hamilton County. And I can say from there that Jermaine and his partners and city manager and everyone have just been great in helping us to just create opportunities to educate and provide information and free resources to the people of Forest Park and the surrounding areas. And so, we started in 2021. We had our first Live Healthy and Move event, which was graciously hosted inside the fire department, and we had a tremendous turnout. We did it again last, this last summer on August, which is National Minority Donor Awareness Month. It was so big the year before, we brought it out into the park area and even bigger turnout. We registered people to be donors. We had great resources for people from the community just to get information about just everything you could imagine. CPR training, just all kinds of opportunities to learn. So, we, you know, through this, have just talked about how can we really partner? How do we, this isn't about just doing an event and then walking away. And so, this opportunity to do the fitness court really excites Life Center. And we are just grateful to be a partner in the project and to see it come to fruition. We want to continue to build this relationship because I think it's just important that the community knows that we're here. We're here to help, to educate and to empower everyone about the importance of donation and really talking about conversations that impact our health. So, yeah, that's. Any questions I can answer? I think I was three minutes.
Any council members have any questions? I do want to thank you for stepping up and continuing the partnership beyond just the event. So, it will be a sustained and long partnership. So, thank you for that. And then, thanks, Jermaine, also, because I know how hard you worked on this. And then, also, Dr. Moore as well.
Yes.
But we do appreciate it.
And if I could just highlight, Jermaine was honored at our community breakfast last year just for all of his work and just really, I mean, he's just, he's in it. And we so appreciate having you as a partner.
Don't let it go to his head.
But no, I mean, this, this really just exemplifies, you know, what partnership truly looks like. And we're just grateful for it because, you know, this really, too, is about equity and healthcare. You know, we talk about that, but that's, that is about, that's what we're doing. And so, this is how we accomplish that, by having these kind of relationships, these kind of conversations. And I think from here, we've just planted a really good seed that Life Center is committed to seeing grow. So, you have a, you have a true partner in Life Center. And again, we're just, we're grateful to be a part of the fabric of the Forest, Forest Park community. Thank you.
Thank you. What I'm hearing you saying is we're going to have another Live Healthy and Move event when it opens? And then, you're going to come out there and we're all going to be on the fitness course?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, we're excited. Yeah, we will be back in August, again, National Minority Donor Awareness Month. And it's going to be bigger and better than last year. I remember you were there. So, thank you and other members of council. So, thank you all for your continued support of our mission.
Thank you. All right. Moving on, we also have a presentation from Dr. Kabamba. Want to come up and address council?
Going by this, right? My name. Doctor, Reverend Dr. Kabamba, Forest Chapel United Methodist Church, which is at 680 West Sharon Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45240. I am here to thank you. And I'm going to read it so I don't miss anything. On behalf of the Forest Chapel United Methodist Church and myself, we take this opportunity to say thank you. Thank you. Thank you for your compassionate and extravagant generosity, giving us $1,500 that we didn't apply for. We didn't ask. But you joined us into this task that we have to embrace the children of this city through the Winton Woods School District and what we started in February, the Forest Park Kids Club. Through these and other families, we were able to purchase new winter coats and hand them to over 100 children. And we had a beautiful, beautiful meal on the 17th of December. You should have been there. It was just amazing to see how this rainbow looks like, our community together there. So, I'm here to say, "Asante sana." Merci beaucoup. De nada. Thank you so much. That's it. Amazing.
We want to thank you, Dr. Kabamba, and everything that Forest Chapel does to continue to be an incredible institution in the community and for organizing the coat drive. Because we know a lot of kids nowadays, everyone sees today, it's freezing cold, but kids like to just wear hoodies for some reason. But then, we also know that there are a lot of children in need. So, we do thank you. 100 kids getting coats is just, I mean, it's just tremendous. So, we do, we do thank you.
And I have to thank Dr. Moore for seeing the Mauritanians that we have. We have English as second language at Forest Chapel on Thursdays and Saturdays. She saw the need and purchased winter coats. I'm sorry to say it. I know you are humble, but I have to say it. So, I just want to thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So, thank you for that. And that concludes item number three on the agenda, which is presentations. Moving on to item number four, which is communications from the public. So, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. So, when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription and comments are limited to five minutes. So, if anyone would like to address council, you can now come up to the podium and do so. Yeah, yeah, absolutely, sir. And there should be a sign-in sheet up there as well.
Put that pen up here because mine stopped working. Well, first of all, good evening, everyone, council and all the visitors. My name is Roy Tribble. I live on Embassy Drive, part of Embassy, the section between Hanover and Sharon Road. I've been there for almost 30 years, actually, 29 years to be exact. Now, when my family and I first decided to move in this area, on that street in particular, the road was not paved. Before the closing of our property, the road was paved. Now, it has increasingly become a speedway for, not so much for young people, but just people in general. And now, I noticed that there are some speed bumps installed on Way Cross, just east of Mill Road. Okay? Now, I was wondering, what it would take to get some speed bumps installed on Embassy?
Well, first of all, thank you for your question. We actually do have a list, and our engineer is not here, Mr. Scott Volkowski. We have a list of the streets that are subject to be paved. As you see, we did some paving on Winton and Kemper. And then, I believe this year, we're going to get to Ken Road and a few others. But in addition to street paving, pavings, we are always taking suggestions from residents about the next streets to receive speed, speed humps or speed cushions. That's actually what these are in particular, which still allows for emergency vehicles to pass over. They're very popular. One of the next locations, I believe, is going to be in Central Park. But I will have to defer to our city manager for the list of the others. But there are several streets who are going to receive speed cushions because we do want our children to be safe, people crossing the streets. And we want people to slow down generally. But we've, we've gotten a lot of feedback from residents that they, that they work and that they appreciate them. Everyone wants them on their street, but we do appreciate your patience as we take all of this information and decide which street is going to be next. But Don, do you happen to know which street is?
Well, we're, we're going through a study. We're going to look at the traffic studies. But I can say that I have spoke with another individual on Embassy. I go down Embassy a lot as well. And I think Embassy definitely is going to be on the list of the first, one of the, some of the first streets to get that. It's become a cut-through for folks who are trying to get to Sharon, as folks who are trying to avoid all of that. And, and there's an awful, I mean, there shouldn't be anybody on that street, quite frankly. It's just, I mean, it's, there's no reason to cut through, to cut through there, but people are using it as a cut-through. And I think that's, that's, it's going to be in the, in the first group when we bring them back out. And in particular, and then that's one of the issues I think we need to address, maybe have some talks to. But I've noticed on that street, and I've had folks complain as well throughout the community, but particularly on that street, as the school buses stream speed down that hill on their way from Hanover to Sharon. And I think they're, you know, that's, that's a conversation we'll have to have with the schools next, you know? They need to talk to their bus drivers. But I know they're all in a hurry and, you know, maybe it just looks like they're going faster than they are. But anyway, you're, you're absolutely right. That, that street's becoming more and more of a cut-through. And we're, you'll see, you'll see a traffic thing to counter. And, but I can say that I'm pretty sure, just anecdotally, I know what's going on there. And I think it's going to be in the, in the first group.
I'd like to say one more thing. Now, if I'm walking out in the yard and I hear, because you can hear the car coming before you see them, I get on, I was like. But some people take a fist to that. I get on, I was like, but some people take a fist to that.
What's bad about it is, you know, the people that are, that are driving through there are your neighbors. Not necessarily on Embassy, but they're all probably Forest Park residents. And, uh, you know, we all need to act like we're driving on our own streets. Not just, uh, you know, not just cutting through, but I've seen a lot of cut throughs through there. Uh, when I first started here, there was almost nobody on that street. And now when I'm on it, I always pass somebody, at least maybe two or three cars. And when I'm coming out into Sharon, a lot of times there's two or three cars waiting to pull out on the street. And I know they don't live there, uh, cause there's not that many people on that street. So, so you're right. And it's, it's, it's become an issue. So I appreciate you, you bringing it up. And again, we'll get you more information if you leave your, your name and your phone number. We'll make sure we, uh, keep you up to date.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And again, we do appreciate you coming in and voicing your concerns cause a lot of times people, um, they may complain to their neighbors, but a lot of people don't take the extra step to come in and address council directly. And that's how we know, um, what issues are top of mind for you. So I know a lot of, a lot of residents also speed on Mill. Um, and I'm right there next to them, trying to get around them, I won't lie. No, let me joke. But, uh, but, uh, we do appreciate you and we're gonna, that is gonna get added to the list. All right. Uh, are there any other members who would like to address, uh, council today? Any other members of the community? Going once? Going twice? No, I'm just, I'm playing. We, we, we serve you, so you wanna come to the podium now?
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Um, we're new to the area. We've been here for about a year and a half. This is my resident, Lonzie Taylor. And we were, um, wondering if, um, you guys are interested in maybe a, a community center for the children? Um, especially young men, um, not limited to. But we would like to introduce that because we have, um, just become, uh, an organization called The Gentleman's Den and, um, slash pantry. And we are offering, um, several different services. Uh, we would like to offer several different services. What we're in need of is a building and we are also needing, um, support. So we come to you guys today and ask for that support and, um, meeting for you. I'm so nervous.
You're doing great.
You're doing great. We did, uh, recently, um, just received our five oh one C three.
Congratulations.
Um, and we are getting our, um, website and bylaws and everything together now. So we are moving forward and passionate about what we're trying to do.
Leave your, uh, if you would, uh, leave your name, your, maybe your email address or definitely your phone number. And I'll get with you and we can have a discussion.
Okay, thank you very much.
And there are a lot of, um,
She scared me out.
It's okay.
Thank you.
There are also a lot of community partners.
There are a lot of community organizations that, um, support youth programming as well. That would be, that would be more than welcoming, um, to help you expand and, and help, help reach out. And I think that I'll, I'll make sure that if, if it's not known, that we get that information to you as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
And welcome to the community. Um, and we,
Yes, welcome home.
And we, we do thank you for taking such an interest. Uh, I do want to also direct you to a, a number of our city commissions that we have. There are several, um, commissions that you can join. Uh, you seem like you're very interested in community, but we have like things like Planning Commission, Economic Development, Quality of Life Committee. And all of these are, uh, they have several different purposes for improving the community. So, um, we'll make sure we get you information on those as well if you want, would like to serve. There's low commitment, low commitment.
Also, welcome home. Thank you. Um, also too, if you get a chance, um, back there, Dr. Kababa is back there. She's an amazing resource for the community. Um, she just told us how she, you know, purchased coats and food for the youth. So that might be an avenue too to kinda look at, to support more immediately. Um, I know she would welcome any additional support and help and services. And I'm just happy to have you while.
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, I don't think when I was here a year, I came to the, a year and a half, I came to the council meeting. Same here.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
All right. And that concludes item number four on the agenda. Moving on to item number five, which is reports from standing committees. Uh, we're gonna start with Councilmember Adams.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon, good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Um, I do have, uh, one thing I wanna share, and that is I'd like to thank everyone that participated in our Christmas, uh, home decorating contest. Uh, again, had an amazing time with the beautification committee. Sir, you've been here twenty-nine years. I invite you to come out and be a part of the beautification committee, you and your wife. Um, I invite our new residents to come out and be a part of beautification committee and any other commission or committee that, um, we have in Forest Park, as our mayor stated. Um, we will be, uh, judging for the summer and we would like to have some new members. Uh, we are an amazing group. Um, we are a mature group. Um, so we are just wanting to have more people come out and help us plant flowers and just keep Forest Park beautiful as it is and even more so. We're a tree city. Uh, we need some new judges. And then we have Arbor Day coming up very soon as well. So there are a couple of activities that we have coming that we'd like to get more members, um, to be a part of. And if you're interested in that, you can talk to our clerk of council, Mr. Kia Bailey herself, and she'll be able to show you what you need to do to, to do that. And if I may, Mayor, just one more quick thing. Um, Dr. Kababa, I didn't, I didn't get a chance to tell you thank you. But last, during our work session, we were talking about the commu, the community and what needs to happen. And publicly, I couldn't agree with you more. Uh, Dr. Moore has been an amazing resource. But with that too, she also shared with me or said to me, you've gotta call Dr. Kababa. You gotta call Dr. Kababa, called you. And that conversation we had was just electrifying. And so I just wanna tell you thank you. I didn't get a chance to do that when you came up to the podium, but I just wanna say thank you. You have been, I've talked to you maybe twice. And each time I get off the phone and I feel so much alive and, and just energetic. So thank you so much for all that you do. Yes, ma'am.
All right, Councilmember Adams, I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any?
No, Mayor, not at this time. I don't have any work session items.
Okay, uh, moving on to Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, good evening. I would like the community to know that the Minority Community Business Initiative will be hosting its very first, uh, annual business awards brunch. Been around a few years. And as a reminder, when the study was performed, uh, for all of Hamilton County and then some, when it looked at black business income and what jobs are being held by, are those jobs that are being created by black businesses, there were over three hundred and twen, and twelve jobs. We had sixty-six million dollars in output and we had over nearly fifteen million in earnings in this area. And so we really appreciate the work from those businesses. And what better time to celebrate them than, um, the, our upcoming month? So our business awards brunch will be on Saturday, March second, at Quinn Chapel A and M. Our keynote speaker will be one of our own natives and former recipient of an award, uh, through the Minority Business Initiative, and that would be, um, Kanita Alexander with Peyton's Place. And so we invite you to, um, come out and register for that. On, uh, on Sunday, Justice Sunday was very nice at Quinn Chapel A and M. Uh, we had a host of different elected officials and many of, uh, our colleagues up here that came. And it was really nice and refreshing to see, uh, what they are doing in the community and bringing Dr. Kane's legacy, um, forward. Our summer youth program, the work that we did last year in having about, about ninety students that were able to attend free summer programs through different partnerships throughout the community. That first meeting of the year is going to be in January. It'll be January thirty-first. It'll be at Red Door Church. And, uh, if you would like more information about that, you can, uh, definitely reach out and we'll make sure that you get in, you can be part of that work.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Um, and please note in the future, um,
I didn't get an opportunity. It went straight to the next item. I was gonna put it on for public comment, but it went straight to the next item.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. But please note in the future, um, any minority business initiative is, you know, just to delineate that it's a separate action from the city. So thank you for that. Um, I don't have any work session items for you. Would you like to add any at this time?
Um, just from last time, the, um, dispensary conversation.
Conversation, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. All right, uh, moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and Happy New Year to the residents of Forest Park. Um, right now, we do have several board positions that are vacant. And I know, um, we'll be, um, looking at applications. So to our residents, if you're interested in serving on a board or committee, please submit your application to the city. We'd love to have you, um, as a participant because we have a lot of nice things happening in the city. Why don't you be a part of it? Um, at the same time, we get, you know, get your, your input as well to what you wanna see done in the city. Um, last weekend, or last week, excuse me, for Civil Service Commission, we did have a very robust, uh, meeting with the residents. Once again, thank you for those who sat on the commission. And there happens to be one vacant seat on that commission as well. Um, and that is all I have right now. And before I do, uh, do wanna wish a happy hundred and fourth anniversary to the women of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated. Um, once again, to the final women of Zeta Phi Beta, if you're listening, Happy Founder's Day.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Harrison. I don't have any work session items for you. Uh, would you like to add any?
Not at this time, sir.
All right, thank you. Moving on to First Vice Mayor, uh, Denise Holt.
Good evening, everybody, and Happy New Year to the citizens and the people here. Um, to the city manager, speed bumps and humps or whatever you wanna call them seem to be the topic of two, twenty twenty-four. I got some complaints yesterday about the speeding and, and the speed bumps on Hillsworth. If you wanna, you know, add that to your list to take a look at. And I was also told that, I know we had two speed bumps on Way Cross, but I was told that one was gone already.
I'm not sure.
That's what I was told.
Unless somebody, unless it,
Somebody borrowed it.
Somebody's dug it up.
But that's what I was told yesterday that there were, because I, I argued with them that there were two.
Two, but they're located at the same location.
Oh, that's nice. Well, so maybe they only saw,
On the inside of the street. So there's two humps.
Oh, okay. You're saying two, but they're together. Yes.
Yeah, cross, yeah.
Okay. So that's what they said. They only saw one. So maybe that's what they meant. They only saw the, the one there. So if you could just add Hillsworth to, um, to that list. And then the people are blowing the stop signs too. So I mean, I don't know. You know, we should do a traffic study maybe on that street. That would conclude my report and I don't have anything to add to the work session.
Thank you for that. Uh, moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Happy New Year to our residents and, um, our surrounding communities. Um, the Quality of Life meeting, um, is January twenty-third. So that will be our first meeting of the year. So we're excited, um, regarding, um, all the activities and events we have planned for the twenty twenty-four, um, year. We also, um, are excited to get the results from our survey. We sent out a Quality of Life survey to see what the residents want regarding activities, safety. Um, and so we're excited to get those results. Um, that, um, survey went, went out in November and closed in December. Okay, so we're excited about that. Also, our library. Please take the opportunity to drive by the library. It is coming along. They have the walls up, um, and I'm just, I'm so excited for our community to have a space and share with other communities, um, in Hamilton County, um, the second largest library in the county. So we're excited about that. And so, um, also I wanna thank Dr. Kabamba. She has been a great leader, partner in our community. And we're so, um, appreciative for your service and your commitment to our school district, um, to our community. And so, um, I just, I just wanna personally thank you for, for, um, being in our community. And that completes my report.
Thank you for that, Dr. Moore. Uh, just for a general question on the survey, when will, uh, the, the feedback be disseminated? Or, or when would all the information be tallied and analyzed or was the timeline on that?
So at this time, um, we are meeting with, um, our communication liaison, um, at our first meeting. So we will have those questions for you and I can present that at our next work session.
Thank you. And we do thank you, um, and Councilmember Adams, being on Quality of Life, leading the charge on those, that Quality of Life surveys. So thank you.
So one question, did they go out to all of the residents in Forest Park?
So there was, uh, several platforms that they went out. Um, it was on our website, um, it was in our newsletters, our e-newsletter. So there are several platforms.
Okay, so there was not a personal mailing?
Oh, no, no. It was electronic.
I, I actually did. They, there was advertisement on social media, so I did see it come on social media as well. So I think that was really good. It, it got out to a lot of people. Um, and, uh, do you have any work session items there?
Uh, no, I do not.
I thank you for that, Dr. Moore. And moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I also would like to acknowledge your Happy New Year to our, our residents here in, uh, Forest Park and abroad. Um, we're moving into our, uh, session of, uh, having our signups for our youth, for our park and rec, uh, program. So we like, uh, our residents and families to, uh, be attentive to, uh, to the signings. Uh, we have that information posted, uh, on our city website. We also have the option for the citizen to call in and, uh, to speak, uh, with the receptionist in office to get the details. But, uh, we're moving into a point of time where we wanna get those students, uh, registered so we can have proper, uh, sign up and, and, uh, getting the equipment and, and the various things that's needed to, uh, continue all of these programs. Also, uh, hitting the point of time of the year where, uh, the, uh, the cold is setting in. So, uh, we know that the city does, uh, provide assistance and information in regards to, uh, assistance of, uh, of your heating environment. Uh, there, there are companies, uh, that the, the city have relation with. And, uh, so, uh, we want our citizens to, uh, be attentive to those things. Uh, uh, we know that, uh, uh, different ones can pay attention to the information that's provided, uh, with the water drippings and try to help with the pipe freezes and, and that leads me to a point where a subject that I've had a few residents to contact me about, uh, some main water line, uh, break issues that, uh, they now experience. And I, I did, uh, put out a communication to Scott, but I would like to, to have that, uh, subject added in our work session. Whether this is information, assistance that the city would also be able to, to, uh, help and provide to our residents. I think that's an area of information that would be helpful. Cause, uh, I know I, I experienced that at one time a couple of years ago. But the main part of that, uh, was handled by the Cincinnati Water Works. But then I was like, man, if that was to happen on this other side of the sidewalk, that would have been all on me. But, uh, I think that's a subject that, uh, that we need to, uh, bring to the table so we can make sure that we've got it digested and get clarity. And, uh, if there's opportunity, we can, uh, provide assistance and, and some helpful direction to our residents. Uh, that would be a good thing.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. I think that's a good item to add to the work session, um, cause we do wanna protect residents' home and, and water lines. All right, and that concludes item number five, reports of standing committees. Uh, moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. So Happy New Year, everyone. Um, I hope everyone had a nice and relaxing, wonderful holiday. Uh, we also do want to thank Quinn Chapel for Justice Sunday and Reverend Covington for inviting a lot of, uh, elected officials. Commissioner Dreehouse was there, a few members of, uh, this body as well. Uh, our clergy are incredible, uh, incredible leaders in the community. Uh, Dr. Kabamba, uh, like I said, is just an institution, Forest Chapel and everything that you do. But we appreciate all of the work that you put into the community and all of our clergy, um, to make Forest Park continue to be great. It is that time of year where it's very cold. So I do want residents to be aware that when you're warming up your car, please stay, you know, near your car. Um, cause it is still very dark in the morning. You, you know, go to bed at night, you get up, it's still night. But, uh, when you're warming up your car, please stay, continue to stay next to your car. Um, and I also want to thank all of, uh, city staff, city manager, all of city council for, um, the kind words and the, um, the card that I got. the, um, the card that I got, uh, after my, uh, great grandmother passed. So it, it meant a lot to me. It was my first, um, Christmas and New Years without her. But I do appreciate everyone, um, signing that and sending that over to me because it, it was, uh, truly meaningful. Um, uh, the, the only thing that I have to report is concerning the planning commission. Just to shift gears a bit, um, the, our partner, the school district has sold, you know, two of its school lots. And there will be things coming to council for approval, uh, rezoning of two of the lots. Uh, one has already begun to move forward. Uh, the plan, the preliminary pa- plan that the, uh, developers pu- put forward, um, passed, uh, the planning commission. So that will be coming before council for a rezoning approval. And then the next one may have to go through a few changes, but I just wanted that to be, um, on everyone's radar as we do continue to think about the developments that we have happening in the city and new developments that are gonna continue to, to come because our market is hot right now. But, um, the only other thing I will add to the work session is to piggyback the conversation on the dispensary. So thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Um, and with that, that would conclude my report. If anyone has any questions, I can take questions now or, uh, we can talk offline. Um, moving on to item number seven on the agenda is the city manager's report. Uh, Mr. Don Jones.
I'll keep it, um, short and sweet, I hope. Anyway, again, thank you, Dr. Kabamba and Commissioner Drew House for coming today. And, uh, of course, the folks from Oregon Donor Network is, uh, as well. We, uh, we appreciate everything. You know, the fact that you're here and your, uh, shows that you're interested and, uh, that you care. So, Dr. Kabamba, thank you for, uh, my mom says hi. So, um, I, I do. She always asks about you. Um, one of it, the city is, uh, hosting an elder justice seminar. That'll be January nineteenth at ten thirty, uh, AM. Excuse, in the senior center. So it'll be talking about, uh, scams and, and, uh, things that, that are, um, uh, being perpetrated against, uh, the elderly in our community. The Hamilton County prosecutors put together a group of folks to go out and talk about this. And also they put together, uh, not only if you, to tell you how to avoid these types of scams, but also if you've been the victim of one or you know someone who's been a victim of one, um, they can, they've got a bunch of resources they've put together to help you, uh, uh, deal with these types of things. So if you're interested, if you're, um, if you know someone or if you're interested yourself, that, the elder justice seminar, um, with regards to scams and other things that go on with, uh, our elderly community, that's January nineteenth, ten thirty at our senior center. Again, the spring piggybacking on our, uh, Councilmember Reggie, um, our spring sports signups ongoing. Uh, the, uh, cutoff is February sixteenth. They're all online this year. Go to our website, follow the link. You must follow, you must sign up online this year. Our rental registration process has begun. We've sent out letters. And, uh, so if you are the owner of a rental property here in the city of Forest Park, you must register it, uh, with the city. If you have any questions, concerns, give us a call here at the city, um, and we'll be glad to help you work through that process. It's an annual registration process again to help us, uh, manage the, uh, the growing number of rental properties within our community and make sure that they're properly inspected and, uh, comply, and comply with, uh, all of the property maintenance standards throughout the community. Uh, I do have a couple of other things. I wanted to read this, uh, because I probably would get it wrong if I don't read it. So, um, about our senior center. So, um, we're excited to announce that beginning today due to the generous, due to a generous grant. All senior residents, that's fifty fi- excuse me, fifty plus and over, uh, in Forest Park.
I just turned fifty. Hold on.
All senior residents, fifty plus, that's not that old. Come on. Um, if, in Forest Park, so all of our Forest Park residents are eligible for a free twenty twenty four senior program membership. Um, to get your free membership, uh, whether it's a new or a renewal, come to the municipal building. We'll help you fill out the membership form. And we just need to verify your address. Make sure you are a, uh, Forest Park resident. Um, after that, you can enjoy all the benefits of the senior programs, uh, in the membership, line dancing, cards, games, luncheons, bingo speakers and more. And you can still come to the elder justice seminar whether you're a member or not. Uh, there's a lot of, we have, host a lot of programs in our community that are open to the public, uh, whether you're a member or not. And the elder justice seminar is, is one of those. But while you're there, you might as well sign up for, for our senior center membership. And also, uh, the same grant will allow all senior members, so once you've joined, all senior members to participate in silver sneakers this year for free. So, uh, that's going to be, uh, provided to our senior citizens as a, as part of the, uh, Quality of Life grant that we received. And, uh, again, thank Dr. Moore for everything she did to help us get that. And this is just one of the programs that we're going to, uh, fund that we use that grant to help Dr. Kabamba as well, uh, fund codes for the community. So we, uh, we're looking to do small grants and small, uh, basically to, we've got people that are involved and people that are donating their time and energy and effort. And, um, you know, we can help with some of the logistics of that and provide some funding to, uh, but the hardest part is getting people involved. So when we have the volunteers and we have got that great group of people working for us, um, the city can't help but be involved. So, um, and finally, I just want to do a quick, um, announcement, uh, about our police department, the Hamilton County Police Association. Uh, it's a law enfor- uh, awards folk, awards, uh, members, which is of which, uh, Forest Park is a member. Um, the investigative award this year is given to members of Hamilton County Law Enforcement who have demonstrated integrity, oper- inte- excuse me, inter-agency operation during the course of a criminal investigation. The award is not intended for a task force, but rather local agencies who mutually investigate a crime, um, or a series of crimes utilizing shared information to bring about a successful conclusion of the case. And, uh, this year, um, our, we have three police officers who were involved in a, uh, a, a very, um, detailed and across jurisdictional, um, crime that was solved this year. Again, thanks for the Hamilton County Sheriff and all of their resources for helping to, uh, to solve this. They were able to take a serial rapist off the, uh, off the street. And, uh, so I want to congratulate, uh, Police Detective Sergeant Dave DeSalvo, uh, Forest Park Police Detective Mike Robb, and Forest Park Police Detective Rebecca Davis for, uh, their work on this case. So that's it.
Congratulations.
What was that award called then?
This award is the, um, it has a name. It's the, it's the, um, Hamilton County Police Association Clarence Sid Caesar. He was a Cincinnati, uh, Police Department, um, detective for many years. And it's Award of Investigation Demonstrating Inter-Agency Operation. So we worked with, uh, of course, the, uh, uh, Woodlawn. Uh, I think the folks, someone in Kentucky, one of the groups, it was either Can- um, Covington or, um, I think it was Covington. Um, but there was a lot of inter-agency, um, um, work to put this together, a lot of DNA. And, um, they ended up getting, like I said, a serial race rapist, uh, um, found guilty. And, um, you know, so, um, again, I want to thank everyone for, uh, participating. It just shows that we've got some really good folks in our police department and, um, who, uh, who care about solving crimes and, uh, and making our sa- our city safer.
Right. Thank you for that, Don. And we do want to congratulate those officers on winning that award, um, and for protecting our community. Um, so that concludes item number seven. Moving on to item number eight, which is other reports, and we're gonna start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a few items to cover quickly. I gave an opinion to our clerk of courts regarding our court's ability to order restitution. Uh, we often have automobile accidents that will cause property damage to city property as well as private property. Um, I also gave an opinion to Mr. Anderson regarding, uh, the appointment of our CRA Housing Council. Uh, I provided information to Mr. Levanduski about a public record request. Um, that was, the request was quite detailed and, uh, we addressed that properly. I also gave, uh, a suggestion for our new, uh, notice of violation for abandoned, uh, vehicles, junk vehicles, what have you. And then for the tax department, I drafted and provided a form subpoena. We have certain employers in Hamilton County that refuse to provide us information for our income tax purposes. And in fact, one of them, our casino downtown, said, oh, you have to subpoena that information. So we are. We've addressed the fact that our tax administrator has the authority to issue a subpoena, and I have now provided her a subpoena for that type of use. That would be the end of my report unless there are any questions.
All right. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Wykoff? All right. Thank you for that, John. Um, moving on to our next, uh, report from our clerk of council, Ms. Akia Bailey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report that ordinance number one dash twenty twenty four and resolutions number one dash twenty twenty four through four dash twenty twenty four was posted as required, and that concludes my report.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. Uh, moving on to the next item on the agenda, which is item number nine, unfinished business and general orders. There are none. Uh, moving to item number ten, which is new business. Uh, before we get into this, this is actually the lawyer, um, and, uh, counsel, this is how the sausage gets made. So you are welcome to stay, but we do know that, um, it is late and everyone has been sitting there for a while. So like I said, you are more than welcome to stay and see, uh, us vote. But, uh, you, uh, we won't be offended if you, uh, cut out a little early. But we do appreciate everyone for coming, and we, uh, thank Dr. Kabamba, uh, and Commissioner Drew House as well, uh, for making presentations and our residents for voicing concerns. All right. Thank you. Uh, so, uh, with starting new business, I need a motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty four for the first time by title only.
It's been moved. Is it, there, is there a second?
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that this ordinance was posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Uh, will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Adams?
Yes.
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
For?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right. Motion to suspend passes seven zero. Uh, first item on the new business, will the clerk please read ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty four by title only?
Ordinance number zero one dash twenty twenty four, an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the city of Forest Park and the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners relative to the improvement of West Sharon Road.
All right. Thank you for that. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
There's no motion because, uh,
Oh, yeah, this is the first reading. Thank you for that. All right. So that concludes the ordinances. I need another motion to suspend.
Motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full and read resolution numbers zero one dash two zero two through zero four dash twenty twenty four by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Just that this, these resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember Clark. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to suspend?
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes. Motion to suspend passes seven zero. Will the clerk please read resolution number zero one dash twenty twenty four by title only?
Resolution number zero one dash twenty twenty four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and approve grant from Life Center for exercise equipment in Central Park.
All right. Thank you for that. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
A motion, resolution number one dash twenty twenty four.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, that this, uh, resolution, uh, will allow the city of Forest Park to, uh, accept two hundred thousand dollars in a grant fund from Life Center to build a fitness court in Central Park. With that, I, uh, motion for the resolution number one dash twenty twenty four.
Thank you for that, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number zero one dash twenty twenty four passes seven zero. Will the clerk please read the next resolution by title only?
Resolution number zero two dash twenty twenty four, a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept and approve grant from the National Fitness Campaign for Exercise Equipment in Central Park.
All right. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
A motion, resolution number two dash twenty twenty four.
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
That this will authorize the city manager, on behalf of the city of Forest Park, to accept thirty thousand dollars in a grant fund from National Fitness Campaign to build a fitness court in Central Park. With that, I motion for a resolution number two dash twenty twenty four.
Thank you, Councilmember. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number zero two dash twenty twenty four passes. Clerk, please read the next resolution by title only.
Resolution number zero three dash twenty twenty four, a resolution amending the designation of depositories by city council and authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with those depository agencies.
All right. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion, resolution number three dash twenty twenty four.
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
That it updates the depository agis- agency that the city used to process payments for mayor court. Uh, motion three dash twenty twenty four.
All right. Thank you. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
All right. Resolution passes. Now, will the clerk please read this next resolution by title only?
Resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty four, a resolution requesting the Hamilton County Auditor to place special assessments against the property in the city of Forest Park for the indigent burial program.
All right. Thank you. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion, resolution number four dash twenty twenty four.
Second.
It moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, that the city provide an indigent burial service to Mr. Herzog at the resident, a resident at, uh, six seventy one Way Cross Road. City plans to recover, uh, reasonable costs and expense for the services provided. Resolution is to, uh, request that Hamilton County Court Auditor to place special assessments against property in the city of Forest Park in the amount of eight hundred dollars plus the cost of the collection. So, uh, with that, I motion for resolution number four dash twenty twenty four.
All right. Thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Will the clerk please call the role on the motion to adopt?
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Clark?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Holt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right. Resolution number zero four dash twenty twenty four passes seven zero. Uh, is there, I need another motion to receive the general fund. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I motion to receive the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
It has been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion on this?
No further discussion.
All right. All those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes seven zero. And that concludes all of the new business. So is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none. This council meeting is adjourned.